Vice Mayor Cooney.
President.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Thank you very much, Clerk Boiling. I appreciate that. Well, I think that my good friend Pastor Cunningham is going to begin to not attend these meetings any longer if I keep doing this to him. But you are here in the audience. We don't have someone to provide an invocation. I tried to give you about two minutes heads up, so I assume you're prepared for that. Pastor Cunningham, please. So rise, please, for the invocation for Pastor Cunningham, and then please stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
It's an honor to be here. Hopefully, you got a little power nap from two meetings. Let's go before. Father, we thank you for the opportunity and for this forum for us to come together to guide us with your principles. We pray for your wisdom and sensitivity upon the group and leaders for a proper direction for our neighborhood and communities. Thank you for the courage that this council has in making the right decision for our community. Father, even though it may not be popular in making some of these decisions, we pray that they're based on moral and biblical principles for our community. I speak equality, equity, and justice for all, as we, Kalamazoo, become a beacon light for other cities. We thank you for each of the commissioners. I ask you to bless each of their families in your son's name and Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again, Pastor Cunningham. I appreciate taking the time to help us get off on the right foot here this evening. So we have first, to get us started here, we have actually three proclamations this evening. And the first one is the Lights On After School Day. And I believe there is someone here from Kidnet. Is that right? All right, if you want to come forward, please. And Commissioner Hess will be reading the proclamation, and I will take it down with me to the podium. Commissioner Hess.
Thank you very much for the honor of reading this proclamation for Lights On After School Day in Kalamazoo, October 20th, 2022. Whereas, the citizens of the city of Kalamazoo stand firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide nurturing, high-quality, and engaging learning experiences that help youth develop social, emotional, physical, and academic skills, support families by ensuring youth are engaged in supportive learning environments after regular school day ends, build stronger communities by invoking, by involving youth, parents, and business leaders in the lives of young people, thereby ensuring all youth thrive. And whereas, Kalamazoo Youth Development Network, Kid Network, has provided significant leadership in improving outcomes for youth grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our youth thrive. And whereas, Lights On After School, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year on October 20th promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. And whereas, more than 28 million children in the U.S. have parents who work outside the home, and 19.4 million children have no place to go after school. And whereas, many after-school programs in our community are facing funding shortfalls so severe that they are being forced to close their doors and turn their lights off. And whereas, the city of Kalamazoo is committed to investing in the health and safety of all young people by providing expanded learning opportunities that will help to ensure all youth thrive. Now therefore, on behalf of the 53rd City Commission and David F. Anderson, Mayor, I, Gene Hess, do hereby proclaim October 20th as Lights On After School Day in Kalamazoo and encourage our community to engage in innovative after-school programs and activities that ensure the lights stay on and the doors stay open for all children after school.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner Hess and the rest of the City Commission. This is our ninth year in Kalamazoo celebrating Lights On After School. It is a day of advocacy. It is a day of all of us coming together to celebrate the work of the out-of-school-time sector, the support of the city of Kalamazoo and others. Young people learn what it means to be an advocate. We march around the different neighborhoods. We'll be at El Conselio. We'll be at the Douglas Community Association, Boys and All the Boys and Girls Club. Units are celebrating. Communities and school sites are celebrating. Young people will be making posters, writing letters to you all that we'll be sharing, writing letters to other community members in support. And when we walk around, we cheer and chant, and young people have looked up to me and say, "I feel like we're protesting." I'm like, "Well, and away we are, so keep yelling." And we invite you to share in the celebration. We can send you some more detailed information. It will be from 4:00 to 7:00 on Thursday at those different locations. We'll probably... So please join in the celebration. It is a day of advocacy, a day of raising awareness for the work of the out-of-school-time sector, and we thank you for your support.
On the behalf of the rest of our team, as a young black boy from Kalamazoo, thank you for standing with us and ensuring that all youth in Kalamazoo have the opportunity to thrive and have agency within this community. Thank you. I am also Jaron White, AOST Development Coach within Kid Network.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to stay down here for the next one. It's going to be read by Commissioner Pradel, and this is recognizing a championship team here in Kalamazoo that we're very proud of. I think, Brian, are you here?
Great. So this is a proclamation celebrating the 2022 Kalamazoo Growlers. Whereas, the Kalamazoo Growlers are Kalamazoo's hometown baseball team, which plays in the Northwoods League, a summer collegiate baseball league comprised of 22 teams. And whereas, the Kalamazoo Growlers were founded in 2013 and just concluded a historic ninth season of firsts as the Northwood League franchise. And whereas, the Northwood League teams play 72 games each season scheduled from late May to mid-August. And whereas, the Kalamazoo Growlers won their very first Northwood League World Series championship in team history by defeating the Duluth Huskies on August 18, 2022, in Duluth, Minnesota, winning by a final indecisive score of 8 to 3. And whereas, the team also won its first Great Lakes East Divisional first-half win, which clinched the team, which helped the team clinch a spot in the playoffs. And whereas, the team also won their first home playoff game in team history, playing right here at Homer Striker Field located in Kalamazoo's Mayor's Riverfront Park. And whereas, the team finished second in attendance in the entire Northwood League for the first time in franchise history, which included the most stadium sellouts in one season, which was 18 games. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Pradel, on behalf of the 54th City Commission and Mayor David F. Anderson, Mayor of the city of Kalamazoo, do hereby recognize the entire Kalamazoo Growlers organization and their loyal fan base on their historic season as the 2022 Northwood League World Series Champions.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. My name is Brian Colpey. I'm the general manager and new owner of the Kalamazoo Growlers. I am extremely proud to call myself the owner of this team. It's an honor to be a part of this city. We, I can, I'm wearing this jersey since back to 2014. I can remember back to 2014 when we were starting the team and we heard the people tell us, "This wouldn't work. People, the city does not support baseball. Do your best, but it's not going to last." And to fast forward nine years later, the people that stand in front of me, most importantly, the people standing behind me, the fans, the people that have supported this team have made that happen. And we're just so honored to be a part of this city. It means the world to us. This baseball team is, as we like to say, not a baseball team. It's the un-baseball team. We're about fun, community, entertainment, food. And by the way, baseball is way down the line, which was probably why it took us nine years to win a championship. So I'm just really proud of our staff, people like Dean Thomas here, videoing from behind me. Just, it's just been so great for this community here, for us. We're so proud of the first nine years. I hope to come back here nine more years, even more proud of the next nine years we have ahead of us. We have a lot of work, a lot of things we want to accomplish, not just on the field, mainly off the field, and hopefully a few more of these things on the way. So thank you, everybody. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, city of Kalamazoo.
So I get to read the last one here, and I guess the folks that are here to receive this one are everyone in the chambers this evening, everybody watching online, and everyone who lives within our region that we provide fresh water. And we had some significant conversations about water and water bills and clean water over the last few months here, extensive conversations. And this is recognizing a special day. It is from the city of Kalamazoo. It is part of a National Day of Advocacy. It's called Imagine a Day Without Water. That day is October 20th, 2022. Whereas, the annual National Day of Advocacy, Imagine a Day Without Water, being held on October 20, 2022, is an organized effort to educate the public about why water is an essential and valuable resource, highlighting the critical importance of access to reliable, clean water, and the need for wider infrastructure investments necessary to maintain and rebuild these vital systems. And whereas, the infrastructure that brings the greater Kalamazoo area residents an average of 80 gallons of water per person per day, and then safely returns water to the environment, is essential to the quality of life, environment, and economic vitality of the city of Kalamazoo. And whereas, a day without water would be a public health and safety crisis due to the impacts which would limit the abilities of safety personnel such as firefighters and hospital staff to do their jobs, as well as businesses and homes to function. And whereas, water infrastructure is critical in protecting public health. And whereas, America's water infrastructure is aging and failing, and there are communities that have never had access to infrastructure in the first place. And whereas, our water infrastructure is necessary to a thriving economy and public health protection, but is facing unprecedented challenges. And whereas, valuing and investing in water systems provide a path to economic recovery. Now, therefore, on behalf of the 54th City Commission, I, David F. Anderson, Mayor of the city of Kalamazoo, do hereby recognize water is essential to the quality of life and economic competitiveness, and acknowledge the importance of educating the public about the value of water through the Imagine a Day Without Water campaign. Let it be further recognized that the city of Kalamazoo is dedicated to investing in safe and reliable water and wastewater infrastructure, and calls on our federal partners to bring much-needed funding and innovation to protect and restore our critical water infrastructure. Commissioners, next on our agenda is adoption of the formal agenda. Are there any changes that Commissioners would like to see? Krishnan Huffman.
Thank you. I would like to move G. 7, 8, and 9 to the regular agenda.
So that is from the Consent Agenda G, removing item 7, item 8, and item 9. Correct? Any other changes, Commissioners?
G. 18, please.
Commissioner Decker, Consent Agenda G. 18.
And then, if I could, I would like to make note that Consent Agenda G. 10 is listed as G. 4, page 168. And we have two G. 4s. I just want to make sure that we know which ones that we are approving. We have two G. 4s. The one that is number 10 for KVII should actually be G. 10 and not G. 4 within our packets. That starts on page 168.
All right. We're not moving anything else, though? Is that correct? Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to move an item from the Consent Agenda to the regular agenda? All right. See, no one. We have the agenda set then for tonight's meeting. Next item, Communications, Mayor Jirisma.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mayor Jirisma. Now is the opportunity for public comments on any topic. Speakers who are here in the chambers will have three minutes for their comments. We will start with in-person speakers and then go to call-in speakers. If you want us to get touch back, back in touch with you, make sure you leave your contact information there at the podium. Please state your name, where you live in the city, before you provide your comments to us. Also, I want to remind people that you can call in and leave a public comment. You can do that by calling this number, 888-382-9556, starting now through the end of this public comment period. So we'll start with those who are here in the chambers. Please go ahead.
Hello. My name is Sadie, daughter Zion. But first off, I want to start with, we need still hand sanitizer in the Portland Lou. Last time I spoke, I requested it. I've also spoke to ambassadors, and still three months later, we have no hand sanitizer. But besides that, I know it's been millennia's leading us to the point that we're at, and it's pretty bad. Like, where we are is not good. So I could say I'm ashamed of the city or the system for doing what it's doing with many of the issues that we're facing, but the fact is, it's none of our individual faults. But we need to rip this Band-Aid off and look at the festering wound of what is happening. I mean, I know I currently am an internally displaced person, so that's homeless. The U.N. calls us internally displaced. We can't be refugees because we haven't crossed international barriers. So, I mean, I'm sleeping outside tonight. Could I go and stay at the mission? Perhaps. There's lots of things that go into that, but many people aren't able to because of mental health issues, as well as trauma, addiction. There's a wide range. But we have no programs that are currently working, and it doesn't seem like it's anything that is going to be that easy to cross. I mean, nobody wants to just face things. Everybody, there's no network. There's no communication. And the city's not really providing space even for us to have these conversations. It's, we need literally city space that we can go and speak, not this, where we have three minutes, but an open room that's like, we are going to find the solutions here in this space. So there's a lot. And it's like, I literally, you know, I'm working on the encampment space and then coming over here. So it's, pretty much I call on the city to become a righteous city. At this point, we are on the verge of Sodom and Gomorrah. I mean, when you really look at it, maybe people don't see it, but Kalamazoo was voted in the top 20 of violent cities. Did you know that? That we're in the top 20 of violent cities for the entire United States? Yet we're fifth in wealth disparity? Our city is loaded with money, which means we have the ability to put resources into place for helping healing, providing resources, and not just throwing, like, I mean, we can't keep putting Band-Aids over wounds. We actually need to heal the root issues. And as long as we keep acting like it's not happening, they're going to keep festering and getting worse and worse. And I know me personally would like to avoid a full-on Armageddon of sorts. So I'm hoping that we could come together as the children of God and actually make this happen, because this is the time. I mean, as I look, and it's 13. We're in Revelation 13 right now, and I do have evidence of that in my bag. And soon, I'll be able to have even the forensic board prove what I'm speaking is truth.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Good evening. I'm Beau Snyder, 1342 Lama Road, city of Kalamazoo. I'm a volunteer field coordinator with Voters Not Politicians, and I'm here to speak to you about Proposal 2, a citizen-led ballot initiative to protect voting rights and modernize Michigan elections through an amendment to the state constitution. When I spoke with you last spring, over 100 local volunteers from Voters Not Politicians, plus volunteers from the League of Women Voters, with support from almost 30 other organizations statewide, we're collecting signatures to put the initiative on the ballot. We collected several hundred thousand more signatures than the 425,000 that were required, and this community responded big time. Kalamazoo County ranks 10th in the state based on its population, but 4th in the state for signatures collected by Voters Not Politicians volunteers. Our work builds on the citizen-led effort in 2018 to modernize the election process in Michigan, which included nonpartisan redistricting, no-excuse absentee voting, and same-day voter registration. Proposal 2 will modernize Michigan elections in several important ways. First, broad language will be added to the Constitution to protect voting rights. Michiganders will have, quote, "the right to vote without harassment, interference, or intimidation." Second, several election changes will help many citizens to cast their vote. Michigan would add early in-person voting for at least nine days, including two weekends before the election. You'll be able to vote at an early voting center set up by your clerk. This will have the same look and feel as Election Day, except you're voting early. If you always vote absentee, you'll be able to opt in to a permanent absentee ballot list instead of having to fill out an application before every election. And an improved tracking system will allow voters to receive text or email updates on the status of their absentee ballot. Finally, several provisions will protect the election process from partisan interference. Election audits will be conducted only by election officials, never outsourced to a partisan vendor, as has been done in other states. Boards of canvassers will have to certify elections based only on votes cast. Canvassers' certification votes may not be based on any personal agendas, and if a canvasser disagrees with the vote counts, they may take their case to the courts. We feel it's important for our elected officials to know about this citizen-led ballot initiative and how it will modernize elections in Michigan. Thank you for your leadership and for your service.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Apple, and I live in the Edison neighborhood here in the city of Kalamazoo. I would just like to make a public announcement to everyone. I'm part of the Earth Care Team at the First Presbyterian Church, which is right next door. And we are holding a, we are presenting Before the Flood, which is a very intense documentary about climate change. But as most of you know, we are deep in the depths of climate change, whether we realize it or not. And so we're just hoping to raise awareness around this, and our Earth Care Team at our church will be holding classes, teaching people many different things that we can do to help mitigate climate change after this presentation. This is happening this Wednesday night at 6:00 p.m. You come to the Level Street door. That's where you also park. And we're very interested in just attracting people that are very concerned about climate change. We do not, we do not recommend children, possibly not even teenagers, because there's a lot of graphic stuff in there. This was narrated and produced by Leonardo DiCaprio, and of course, the scenery when he's not showing the bad stuff is absolutely gorgeous. It's National Geographic. So just wanted to make this positive announcement that we are wanting to help raise awareness around climate change. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Phil Giorgio. I live at 125 Berry and been almost a lifelong member, resident of Kalamazoo since 1959. I love this city. But I want to present a brief statement and then some documents for you. Let me say that in 2015, members of the United Nations came together in Paris and stated in clear terms that the greatest threat to human existence and life on earth is climate change, with a central aim of strengthening the global response and combating the threat, the threat of global warming. 196 countries entered into a legally binding agreement. The signers of this treaty, the Paris Agreement, set a commitment of resources and actions to achieve and maintain sustainable, low-carbon future for the planet and its inhabitants. The United States participated in ratifying and adopting the Paris Agreement. In June this year, the City Commission unanimously approved a community sustainability plan, setting forth a 10-year plan for the city and the community to create a more sustainable, resilient Kalamazoo. With its intentions on paper, the city of Kalamazoo needs to now follow the framework of the Paris Agreement and make a commitment of resources and actions that lead to achieving net zero emissions for our community and for the world. We have an opportunity and an obligation to act in our good intentions and responsibilities. These opportunities come in many forms, one of which is a transfer, transformation of condemned toxic land into green energy platforms to create energy generated from natural resources. I ask the commission to consider a green energy platform development on the city, on the 68-acre Cork Street Superfund site inside the city of Kalamazoo. This condemned site currently produces no revenue. It's a liability to the city. Envision a solar array field on this property producing 8 to 10 megawatts of electrical power. This power can be used for many purposes, but I ask that the committee consider the production of green hydrogen, hydrogen created by renewable energy. Most people are unaware of this vast potential of green hydrogen. It is indeed being produced today in various locations around the world and is rapidly becoming a multi-billion-dollar market. A group of Kalamazoo citizens has studied green energy and has produced research and analysis regarding the possibilities of solar arrays and green hydrogen production in Kalamazoo at the Cork Street site. This group is happy to share their research.
Mr. Giorgio, you said, the three minutes is up, and so people at home aren't able to hear you, but if you have information you would like to distribute to the Commission, if you could just give it here to the Clerk, Scott Boiling, and that can be passed around.
I have some documents.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
I have some documents briefly.
If you have someone else who'd like to speak and take another three minutes, that would be fine.
I don't have a turn to sort of...
Okay. Next, please.
My name is Beckett Jones. I think as most people here know, I'm running for Eighth District Court Judge here in Kalamazoo County. I appreciate the time that's been spent letting me speak over the last several months of this campaign. I wanted to dig down a little deeper into why I'm running and what I think about some very specific things related to the judiciary. I don't think it's a secret that I'm a pretty big proponent of specialty courts here in Kalamazoo County. I think that I am hoping to stand on the shoulders of others with regard to that. Judge Schmay, current judges that are running these specialty court programs. But it dawns on me that a lot of the public doesn't understand why these things are important. And they're important because from a district court perspective, the court really deals with criminality at an inflection point. Most criminal behavior committed by individuals is not just jumping straight into major felony interactions. There is a gradual step up over time, a lot of times starting in the late teenage years and moving up. The district court, if approached the right way, can deal with a lot of these things. Can it stop all crime? It cannot. But we can make things better. And I've served for a significant period of time as defense attorney liaison for Drug Treatment Court, Mental Health Recovery Court, as well as OWI Court in the past, currently sit on Mental Health Recovery Court. The big push with those programs is very simplistic. It is a listening approach. It is not a lecturing approach to the bench. A lot of the people that appear before the court are individuals who feel isolated, who feel like nobody cares about them. The reason that these programs work for our broader community, the reason that we see recidivism drops over and over again utilizing these approaches is because the court engages with these individuals, because it listens. Those people feel cared about, and when they feel cared about by their community, behavior changes over time. That specialty court approach to being a judge really should be filtered through the everyday process as well, a listening approach. That doesn't mean that people, you know, just get slapped on the wrist. There still has to be accountability for criminal behavior, but there needs to be a listening approach, a teaching approach to the entire process. This Commission has planted seeds all year, especially with youth programs and things like that. Those things will bear fruit in years to come. I'm asking that the voters of this community give me an opportunity to plant a seed as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening to our mayor and our vice mayor, our city manager, and also all the commissioners here tonight and city staff. My name is Charle Davis. I live in the city of Kalamazoo, and I am the Executive Director of Isaac. I am so excited to invite you all to our 2022 Isaac Public Meeting on October the 25th. In Isaac, we have intentionally been looking at our anti-racism trainings and figuring out what is next in our ongoing learnings and our ongoing action processes. We at Isaac have been leaning into new and advanced work, anti-racism work, and you all have received an ask about the Erase, Internalize Racial Oppression and Superiority workshops. We invite you on this journey with us. It is a journey. You also have received Gun Violence Prevention Task Force ask as well. We already know that our community is in pain for many reasons, and healing comes when we fully address the root of the problem. Vice Mayor Cooney, you mentioned that different zip codes have a different life expectancy, and these are predominantly BIPOC neighborhoods. We have listened to community member after community member call in and share their health concerns. Thank you all for the intense conversations and discourse, the important discussions and the votes, and now we ask for deepened action from you all, City Commission, as if it was all of us who were physically impacted by this. I want to just briefly share that specific ask. Do you commit to support the hiring of a culturally competent public health consultant or officer to investigate and mitigate the effects of the long-term environmental pollution and water injustices that have physically impacted residents of the city, specifically on the north and east sides of Kalamazoo? And finally, City Commissioners, questions for you. The recent DEI report has told us the same thing that we have known for decades. How are you as commissioners supporting this DEI report and ensuring actual change? And what will you all do as commissioners so that this burden and this vital work does not lie solely on one person? Also, can you confirm that this situation with our chief is being handled consistent and how previous situations with chiefs and similar nature have been handled? And then finally, are you ensuring that this past process and current investigation were and are centered in anti-racism and inequity? Thank you for not being silent when it is your role to ask questions and to use this anti-racism lens. We can use an anti-racism lens and honor confidentiality and protocol. We are calling on you to lean deeply into your role to examine practices and policies, to hold each other accountable.
Next, please.
Larry Bound, City of Kalamazoo. I'm here to address you today about ongoing issues with our homeless population. A week ago yesterday, I was out of town but was notified of a multi-tenant campment adjacent to one of my properties that basically was turning portage creek into a toilet and a garbage dump. I called the non-emergency number to have something done, came home Tuesday, nothing had been done. I've talked to Mary Miller, I talked to City Manager Ritzma, whose one comment was, well, they're just going to move someplace anyways, as in, why should I bother with it? Yesterday, I called non-emergency number in the morning and was told because it was city land, there would be no enforcement of the law. In the afternoon, I did get a public safety officer out who told me he'd been instructed that he could not enforce the law. So my question is, who's making decisions here instructing public safety not to instruct, not to enforce the law? Because is it the city manager acting unilaterally? Because under the City Charter Number 43A, the powers and duties of the manager are to see that the laws and ordinances are enforced. Or is it the manager's office acting at the behest of commissioners? I would ask, does the city have insurance? If somebody dies or is injured because you knowingly and willingly did not enforce the law, are you insured? Are you all insured? Are the taxpayers on the hook for a lawsuit that happens because of that? I'd like to know what laws are and are not being enforced. Going forward, if I'm told there will be no enforcement, I'm going to FOIA it and get the transcript. I'm going to take names of officers, and if you won't enforce the law, then I'll try and get you in front of a judge to make this Commission enforce the laws of the city. Because we are losing the city. It's disrespectful to the citizens, and I think it's disrespectful that you think that you can just decide which laws to enforce and not to enforce. I also understand that we're not ticketing camping in Bronson Park in the evening. I intend to see in the city where there's illegal activity and call it in, and we're going to get you to enforce the law one way or the other. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please. Is there anyone else in the chambers who'd like to make any comments during the public comment period this evening?
Don't start me yet. Good evening, everyone. You've heard several people talk about their concerns and what they feel you have or have not been doing, will do, is probably to do, maybe not done. I just want to simply read what I have before you. I'm a Christian. I read the Bible. I pray. I ask for wisdom. I ask for guidance, as I hope you all do, because that's the only way that we're going to get to where we need to be if we're listening and following His instructions. But I want you to hear this. What does the Bible say about community leadership? So what does the Bible say about community service? Philippians 2, 3 to 4. Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit. Rather, in humility, value others above yourselves, not looking in your own interests but the interests of each of you, looking into the interests of the others. That's who we are. That's what this community should be about. And I know some of you say it, thought of talk, we've got to do better, you are in a position to do better. Kalamazoo is in a very unique position where we can be what others hope to strive to. We can, we can do it. But if you continue to do and think in the same ways that has historically been done, the systemic racism that we know that has been placed through the policies and procedures that you still are acting out of, operating out of, we will not get to where we can and should be. So again, I ask you to listen, to take to heart what has been said. There's a couple of you that I'll be reaching out to, to talk one-on-one with, because I think there's some things that you can do. And the Bible tells us, if you have auld with your brother, you go there first before you bring it to the elders. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? CM Chamberlain, is there anybody who's called in for a public comment?
We'll go ahead and check, and just as a reminder for the public, this is the one time for public call-in comments. So if anybody has a comment regarding one of the two public hearings, this is the time they would need to do that for the call-in comments. First public hearing is about an ordinance change for the zoning map for Kalamazoo College Institutional Campus Master Plan, and the second public hearing is regarding the changing of the well-field protection ordinance from the zoning ordinance to the general code. So just for that reminder. Caller ending in 7419, you're live with the City Commission. Go ahead, you're live with the City Commission.
Hi. My name is Tina McQuinn. I live on Lake Street, 310 Lake, the area that floods all the time. I live in South Town neighborhood, the neighborhood you created in 2015, the neighborhood that you ignore, the neighborhood that you never answer my question. I've asked the same question for six years, Mr. Anderson, to you and all of you, and no one's given me an answer yet. When are you going to fix your sewers and your storm drains in South Town neighborhood? You can put bumpouts on stupid streets, you can put bike lanes, you can put roundabouts. It's all about what neighborhood you live in. It's not about the poor neighborhoods, because you, you do whatever you want to do to our neighborhood. I know you're all ignoring me. You're all bored with my same question. Why don't you give me an answer for once? When are you going to fix your 100-year-old sewers that are in South Town neighborhood? The ones that flood, your storm drains flood the streets, they back up the sewers in our homes? There's poop floating around in the streets that kids walk in, we have to wade in to get out of our neighborhood? There's more important things than bumpouts in a rich neighborhood or roundabouts a block from each other. There's more stuff that needs to be fixed. When are you going to fix the sewers? Are you going to wait till they destroy our homes? If it was your home, you wouldn't want the city's poop floating around in your basement. I'm tired of asking the same question. I never get an answer from you. Six years now, never get an answer. Thank you. Bye.
Caller ending in 7024, go ahead, you're live with the Commission.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, you're live with the Kalamazoo City Commission.
Yes, hi. My name is Kay. I'm calling because once again, Bronson Park is being affected as before when the UCATM was there. And I heard another community member say that they were using, the homeless people using the creeks and the rivers for dumping grounds and as toilets, and that's really just pinning the community against each other, because the real people, the real, like, graphic packaging, the real companies are dumping and using our rivers as toilets are these corporations who get tax abatements, to pollute our air, to pollute our water, and to not pay anything to help out the community. They're just taking and taking the labor and not paying enough and having these crazy long hours and not having any kind of anti-racist lens to them, and this is just being allowed in this city. And the people here who suffer, who are stigmatized, our helpless people, who once again do not have anywhere to go now that it's cold. Where are the pods? Where are the solutions? People are still facing charges from the last major sweep from Amnesty Camp and Stadium Camp, over 200 people were displaced, and still there's no answers for us. Like some commissioners mentioned, Cradle and the Vice Mayor and another commissioner said, let's use the funds that we've been sitting on, that the city has been sitting on, to create answers, to create solutions for the people who are impacted. Instead of stigmatizing them and continue to police them and try to use the law against them, we have to look at the city government, and we have to listen to the voices. We're talking about being anti-racist, being anti-classist go hand in hand. The BIPOC community is the one that is suffering the greatest from all these negatives, from white people, white people not acting against white supremacy. When white people do not actively act against white supremacy, then they are acting on behalf with their silence, and that it's been enough, okay? It's been enough that once again, the sweeps are happening, and people are still facing charges over this, and none of you want to help us pressure the city attorney. Wasn't Robinson supposed to retire? But he's still sitting there after all these, all these activists are facing charges after the housing ordinance is not, it was a joke not being presented to the community as it was supposed to be, as it's being enforced. And so there's all these issues, and when are you all just going to start addressing the real fact that this city is bought by people who do not care about a virgins, who are invested, and the Foundation for Excellence doing all these aspirational projects? Yeah, those are...
That was the last call.
Thank you very much, DCM Chamberlain, for managing that. And I do want to thank everyone who took the time and made the effort either to come here to the chambers and make public comments, or to call in and make public comments. Thank you. Next on our agenda is a two, first of two items under our public hearings. So at this point, I would like to open a public hearing to receive comments on item F1, An Ordinance Amending Section 50-1.2, The Zoning District Map, and Approving the Updated Kalamazoo College Institutional Campus Master Plan Agreement, with conditions. I'm Manager Ritzma, is there a staff presentation on this item?
No, you're on...
No, Your Honor, we had a presentation last meeting, so our staff are available to answer any questions that might come up.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Any questions for Manager Ritzma or his team at this point from the Commission? All right, seeing we have had extensive discussions about this particular topic. There's no discussion from the Commission. Now is the opportunity for public comments from individuals who are here in the chambers to speak on this item. Speakers, we each have three minutes for their comments. Please state your name and where you live in the city.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Lisa Presley, I live at 1535 Grand Avenue. I am the Treasurer for the West Main Hill Neighborhood Association Board. I am pleased to be here tonight to tell you how wonderfully the Kalamazoo College staff have worked with the neighborhood to try to resolve issues and concerns that came to us, particularly about noise and lights and things like that. I was not here when the, 10 years ago when the plan happened, and I understand it was a slightly different story back then. And we have been just so thankful and responsible to the college and how they have endeavored to work with our residents and with our association board to put forward this 10-year plan. I hope you see somewhere in the documentation that our board did pass a motion commending the college for this and also in agreement of this plan. And so we hope that the Commission will take this into account as you consider whether or not to accept this plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here in the chambers who wants to comment on this item? Seeing no one, I will now close the public hearing. So Commissioners, the recommended action is a motion to adopt the ordinance and approve the agreement. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hess.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner... Is there any discussion? Commissioner Hess.
I just have one question for Susan Lindemann from Kalamazoo College. I know that you, could you speak a little bit to the benchmarking of the buildings that you've done for environmental purposes at the college? And then, within this plan, are you planning to benchmark other buildings? And where is the college with the, your environmental stance, especially with the President's Climate Commitment?
Question. So, the President's Climate Commitment called for a 10-year initial plan to follow that. And, anyway, we just, we just published, our, our President's Cabinet just approved our next five-year plan, which calls for an additional 10% reduction. Our, our overall goal is to be net zero by 2050. So we are, we are striving to be at a 35% reduction from 2008 levels in the next five years. And a lot of the, you know, a lot of this is simply our aging infrastructure, we're able to make upgrades that pretty quickly show us some savings, particularly transitioning from steam to direct hot water. I won't get into the weeds about that. But just to say that we're excited about our new five-year plan, which addresses energy as well as some other things. As far as benchmarking goes, we have started retrocommissioning buildings, starting with our older buildings, and so that's how we're doing that. And we've been very successful with that.
Thank you. I know that Commissioner Hess called you up here by name, but if you'd be so kind as to introduce yourself again, and what is your responsibility at Kalamazoo College?
My name is Susan Lindemann, I am the Associate Vice President for Facilities Management at Kalamazoo College.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Any more discussion, Commissioners? Clerk Boring, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Prado.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The ordinance is adopted and the agreement is approved. Next is item F2. So I would like to open a public hearing to receive comments on an ordinance to remove the wellhead protection overlay from Chapter 3 of Appendix A, the zoning ordinance. Manager Ritzma, is there a staff presentation on this?
We had a presentation at the last meeting, so staff are available for any questions.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. So we did have an extensive description about this particular action. It's moving some things around to a large extent. Anyone have any questions for staff here on the Commission? Seeing none, now is the opportunity for public comments on this item. Seeing no comments, I will now close the public hearing. The recommended action is a motion to adopt the ordinance. Is there a motion? So moved. Motion made by Commissioner Cooney.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Decker, thank you so much. Any other discussion, Commissioners? Attorney Robinson.
I just want to, I think there's a scrivener's error in the ordinance. It talks about that this only becomes effective should there be a amending Chapter 39 of the Code of Ordinances to incorporate this. Says before October 3rd, I think we mean to say October 31st. So that's just a scrivener's error, we'll correct that in the final version.
Thank you, Attorney Robinson. Assuming there's no more discussion, Clerk Boring, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Prado.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The ordinance is adopted. Next is the consent agenda. City Manager Ritzma.
Thank you, Your Honor, we have several items this evening that are presented for approval. First is the approval of a contract supplemental and change order with Carrier and Gable for public, for traffic maintenance supplies in the amount of $100,000. Next is the approval of a contract and purchase order with Peters Construction for the Station Hydrants project in the amount of $103,647.50. Next is the approval of a contract extension for materials testing with SME in the amount of $106,810. Next is the approval of a contract to purchase 100 dry tons of ferric chloride from PVS Technologies in the amount of $110,200. Next is the approval of a one-year contract with high-grade materials for the purchase of miscellaneous aggregates and road gravel, Group 1, in the amount of $138,350. Next is the approval of a contract with Severance Electric Company Incorporated for the Stadium Drive Signal Improvements Project in the amount of $174,910. Next is the approval of the Kalamazoo Valley Intergovernmental Ambulance Agreement renewal with Life EMS for advanced life support for the period November 1, 2022, to October 31, 2024. Next is the approval of the following amendments to the fiscal year 2022 budget. Increases in the General Fund of $405,062. The Cemeteries Fund of $16,500. The Solid Waste Fund of $200,000. And cost recovery grants of $12,000. And a decrease in the Major Streets Fund of $29,863 for a net budget increase of $603,699. Next is the acceptance of a 2022 Bulletproof Vest Program Grant Award in the amount of $28,171.88 from the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs. Next is the acceptance of a grant in the amount of $62,500 from the Irving S. Gilmore Foundation in support of the Downtown Ambassadors Program. Next is the acceptance of a grant in the amount of $80,000 from the Irving S. Gilmore Foundation to support the 2022 holiday events. Next is the approval of an amended grant agreement with the Kalamazoo Eastside Neighborhood Association for $275,000 to be used to purchase and rehabilitate a previously vacant and blighted property that will further the goals of the neighborhood listed in the Imagine Eastside Neighborhood Plan. Next is the approval of a special permit for a miniature pig to be kept at 1524 Humphrey Street, subject to compliance with applicable statutes, ordinances, and health codes. And next is the authorization for the mayor and city manager to execute an extension of the lease for Bronson Park with Kalamazoo County. And yes, you did read it right, I did read it right, it was a miniature pig, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Manager Ritzma. So Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to approve Items 1 through 6 and 10 through 17, and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hess. Clerk Boring, please call the roll.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Prado.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes, and I will abstain from number 15 as it has to do with the Kalamazoo Eastside Neighborhood, and I've worked closely with them in the past.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The items on the consent agenda are approved. We're now down to our regular agenda. First item is item H1. City Manager Ritzma.
Adoption of an ordinance repealing the weights and measures provisions of the Chapter 39 of the Code of Ordinances and replacing those provisions with the wellhead protection ordinance provisions.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. I'll ask this question again, is there a staff report on this item?
No, this was also presented at the last meeting, but staff are available for questions.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, any questions on this item? Seeing no questions. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this item? Item H1. Seeing no one, the recommended action is a motion to adopt the ordinance. Is there a motion? So moved. Motion made by Vice Mayor Cooney.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Prado. Any discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, Clerk Boring, please call the roll.
Commissioner Prado.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The ordinance is adopted. Well, we have several more items now on our regular agenda, so I'll back to you, Manager Ritzma.
Item G7 is approval of a supplemental change order to the contract and purchase order with Rathco Safety and Supply Incorporated for traffic control and placement in the amount of $325,000.
I was looking forward to your attempt to pronounce that particular word.
I refuse to.
Okay. Commissioner Decker. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Hoffman, sorry.
Thank you. You know, we work together as a team, so. I just, I wanted to just do a little more education for myself and the community at large with the supplemental change order. A couple of questions I had was, this increase, what, what makes this contract? What is the total for this? What the additional 325 ask?
I don't see...
Oh, there you are.
Sorry. I'm like, did he leave?
How do you know the shadows?
Mr. Baker, would you please come?
You're leaving the manager hanging here.
I apologize for that.
Director Baker.
Yeah, thank you. So Commissioners, I did want to point out, as we get into the discussion, that there is a material error with that memo and that recommendation. So in summary, the recommendation at the top of the memo, the ask for City Commission, if you will, is for $325,000. And then at the bottom of the document, the financial aspects of it, we summarize approximately $350,000 in expenditures. So that does need to be corrected, so that's going to have to get sent back to the department to clean that up. But I'd be happy to continue to talk about the document outside of those material errors in their request.
I appreciate that. So you posed a question. Did you catch that question, Director Baker, or do you?
Yeah, I can go into that. So I first wanted to highlight that, maybe the city attorney can advise us on, you know, maybe next steps with this, the action item itself. But I did want to make the Commission aware that it's fundamentally wrong in terms of the financial aspect and, and the requested ask. That being said, what constitutes a change order and everything else? So this document attempts to summarize some costs that were occurring in 2022, current fiscal year, and then also the contract for next year as well. So the change order amount would be the difference in projected versus actual expenses within that contract for this fiscal year, and then it attempts to carry out purchasing for next year as well. I will say that with this type of a contract, this is something that we use every day. We use it on multiple fronts. We use it in all the different workflow departments that we have, water, streets, sewer, special events, emergency, traffic closures, things of that nature. So we present kind of what we think we're going to need from a traffic control basis, but oftentimes we're correcting in, in the year actual. So that's kind of where you see that, that change order amount.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Hoffman? Attorney Robinson.
I understand where Director Baker's coming from. However, because the fiscal impact is $75,000 for 2022 and estimates 200,000 for 2023 and another 75 for 2024, since those are estimates going forward, you are permitted to approve this for 325 because it very well may cover it. If there's expenses projected next year for either actual expenses in 2023 or 2024, they can come back and ask for that change.
Thank you, Attorney Robinson. Any other questions for staff on this particular item? Attorney Robinson, we can act on it, now it's on the regular agenda. So that said, is there a motion then to approve the supplemental change order to the contract?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hess.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hoffman. Any other discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, Clerk Boring, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Prado.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. This approval of a supplemental change order is passed. Next, Manager Ritzma, is what was item G8?
Approval of a one-year contract extension for the purchase of Charis 8400 Liquid Phosphate from Elhorn Engineering Company in the amount of $493,308.
Thank you so much. And so are there questions about this item from Commission? Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick question and kind of looking at the prices. We are coming upon budget here, so every penny that we spend in certain areas is definitely very important. So Director Baker, if you can talk to us about why we're, about why the increases is so high? Just to let everybody know why we're requesting this much and what has gone up?
Yes, thank you very much for the question. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, City Commissioners. This is a great example of one of the many items that we discussed as we were kind of deliberating through those rate increase recommendations. And so as we procure, whether it be chemicals or materials for our processes and things like that, this is just another example of, you know, some of those tremendous cost increases that, that we've seen going forward. I believe the memo acknowledges a 73% price escalation since we last contracted this in 2021. I think that's something we're seeing across the chemical industry. We're seeing petrochemical and, you know, chemicals, they're very intensive in, in terms of their manufacturing process and they're, they're expensive. of their manufacturing process, and they're expensive for us. I will say this is a critical water treatment additive for us. This is a selected blend of poly orthophosphate that we use within the drinking water system to coat the pipes and protect folks from lead. So this is a very important chemical for us, and, you know, it is budgeted in the budget moving forward, and that's, this was part of the reason why we had that rate increase recommendation, this and many other of these chemicals as well.
More questions? Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Director Baker.
So very specifically, what is the primary function of adding this to our water system?
So this chemical has kind of two functions. The primary function of that is coating our pipes to protect the system from lead corrosion. The other secondary benefit of this is, in the way that we utilize it, is iron sequestration. So this chemical, the ortho component of it helps to coat pipes and protect us from lead, and then the poly component, the polyphosphate, helps to sequester iron and helps to, you know, enhance that water quality coming to our homes and helps to reduce that iron content.
Thank you very much, Director Baker. Any other questions? Commissioner Hoffman.
I just have one more question for you. So is this chemical so specialized that just this one engineering company produces it? Or are there other vendors that could also?
Yeah, so this is something that we're, the way we bid this out is really just at the raw product specification. So I believe this is a 70/30 blend that we specify with the ortho polyphosphate blend. This is based on, this is a Karis product, which is manufactured, I believe, by Alexander Chemical. That's the vendor that we're getting it from, and this, one of those unique things about purchasing and how we get our materials is that we'll put out a base specification. You know, this is not anything specialized, other than this vendor specializes in their ability to procure and deliver these chemicals. So it could come from anybody. It's just that the market has seemed to favor this company to provide these chemicals to us.
Thank you, Commissioners. And thank you very much, Director Baker.
Thank you.
So the requested action is approval of a one-year contract extension to purchase this Karis 8400 liquid phosphate. Is there a motion?
I'll move that.
Made by Commissioner Hess. Supported by Commissioner Pradel. Any other discussion? Thank you, Commissioners. Clerk Boring.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. The approval of a one-year contract extension is passed. Manager Ritzma.
Approval of a two-year contract extension with Everside Health LLC for the staffing and operation of the city employee healthcare clinic in the amount of $1,583,969.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Questions for Manager Ritzma or his team? Commissioner Hoffman.
Thank you. First, let me say, I had no idea that we had an employee healthcare clinic. So it was news to me. I'm sure, I don't know how many people in our community knows that we have this benefit for a little over 650. I think it's a wonderful thing. Because I didn't know anything about it, I just wanted to pull it off and ask.
Sure.
Like, how many, how many, how big is the team as a clinic? What is that comprised of?
So I don't know the exact number, but they have a primary doctor. Oh, we have our CFO, Steve Asensi, that can inform you. Thank you, Steve.
The team at the healthcare clinic is roughly four to five. We have the one primary doctor. I know of one or two front desk people, and then I don't know if they have a couple more that rotate in, but anywhere from three to five is what I'd put that at.
Thank you for that. Thank you. I just, I think this is phenomenal that our staff have this wonderful benefit that I had no clue. I just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate the city for having this clinic.
I just wanted to add in addition to that, Manager Ritzma, unless you were going to do it, is that interestingly enough, this was actually a component, and Steve, you may end up coming on this, of a money-saving effort that we had here at the city, because one of the things that was driving the expense side here at the city was our really increase in medical costs, because we do provide benefits here to the city. And this model was to address that by helping direct people to this clinic. I don't want to talk about that anymore. CFO, Vincenti, but?
Yeah, I can just add a little bit more background to that for you. So then just also to kind of highlight too, our retirees are also eligible to go, so that adds a much larger pool. And so between our city portion of healthcare and our retiree portion of healthcare, the city spends anywhere from $16 million to $20 million a year in medical treatment, and this clinic helps, you know, allay those costs upfront by paying more of a wholesale price rather than a retail medical price. We're still kind of getting up and going in the first couple of years here, so we're kind of building that base, and we're seeing that improvement come. And as we get a little bit more experienced with Everside, we'll be able to more accurately denote exactly how much we're anticipating that we're saving every year by doing this. But that's kind of where this all comes from, is just that large amount of spend, and being able to do this provides unique care for employees and retirees, but then also provides those savings in the backend for us as well.
Thank you, Mr. Asensi. So this is maybe one of those rare occasions when you can possibly do good and save money at the same time.
Say.
Any other questions for staff on this particular item? Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager Ritzma, I'm not sure if you know this answer and I just have it off the top of your head. This is a great benefit. It's an awesome benefit, especially when you think about the cost of healthcare for an individual that's working and barely making means eat, making means meat. Can you tell us about maybe how many of the 600-plus employees that we have here within the city, how many maybe visit it per year?
I don't have that information right now, but we certainly can provide it.
Okay, I was just, you're wondering, it's a great benefit.
Yeah.
I see the cost savings, and I'm thinking that, you know, if only half of the city employees are using this, just think of what the savings could be if everyone actually went there and used it. So, because I believe the clinic was also at the employee appreciation.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Very good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff on this item? Then the requested action is approval of a two-year contract extension with Everside Health LLC. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Cooney.
Second.
Supported by Commissioner Hoffman. Any discussion, Commissioners? Commissioner Hess.
I'll just say, in the last few weeks, we've emails letting us know that we're eligible for vaccines there, for our COVID vaccines. So they're doing that as well. So let's reach out to them if we need those vaccines.
And flu shots.
And flu shots.
Thank you. Seeing no other discussion, Clerk Boring, please call the roll.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The two-year contract extension is approved. Manager Ritzma.
Adoption of a resolution vacating Cooley Street between Eleanor and Water Streets.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Questions for Manager Ritzma or his team on this item?
Hi, yes, just, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. Kind of going through some of the, first, let me say that I know our planning commission and department is awesome at what they do. I just have a couple of questions regarding to some of the meeting notes and what we're approving here today, which is the vacating of the Cooley Street between Eleanor and Water Streets. And I just want, first of all, if we can explain to the public really what that means when you talk about vacating a street.
Thank you for the question. Good evening, Commission. What vacating a street?
Would you please introduce yourself and who you work for and what you do?
Bobby Dirk, City Kalamazoo. My position is planner, when I work in the planning division.
Thank you, sir.
And one of my roles is to process and manage street vacation requests, and I think the best way to think of a street vacation, a public road in front of your house, sidewalk to sidewalk essentially, is land deeded to the public at some point, whether through plat or a land dedication. And that stretch of Cooley Street dates back to the original plat of the village, going back to the 1840s, I believe. So what it is, it's the closing of, or the transfer of land from a public way to private property. In this example, or by policy, and I believe state statute, the adjacent landowners get first right or refuse, and in this case, both parties have taken that. Another example you'll see is a dead-end street. Sometimes two neighboring landowners will get the adjacent pieces is a similar example.
Thank you for that. And I know there was some concern regarding the maintaining of the pathway. Has that been decided? Will Plaza Court be the ones maintaining that pathway?
That is a good question, and the answer is yes. Currently, there is an easement in place for the pathway, and then where it comes today, it stops at the public right of way, because it's a public way, where after the street vacation request and through the transfer of real estate, they're going to provide an easement to connect those pieces.
Just going back through some notes here, just a moment. I think that answered some, the two of the questions that I have. Again, I just wanted to educate the public on really what, well, actually going back. So if they're vacating the street, that means if it was once a public street, correct, it will no longer become a public street? Is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct. There will be an easement over the full width of the road, though, however, for public utilities underneath. So there will still be access to the public utilities, and in the preliminary plans provided for the development that this is in support of, a roadway will still go through there, which also has the condition of the public safety department for access. So there would still be a way through there.
Okay. It'll be a private way, which means that, again, again, people, because I know sometimes, you know, even me, sometimes a lot of people, especially with the construction that's going on in that particular area, they use that street to kind of get around the construction that's happening. So when this piece of property is vacated, how long do you think that it would take for that actually to be sealed off? And are they planning on putting things up to saying, hey, you can't go this way anymore? It's vacated? Because I can see a lot of people at about 7:30 in the morning, not very happy with not knowing that a street is now vacated and they can no longer use it.
Good question. By policy, the applicant has 60 days to make payment for the land, which then the deeds and all that are prepared and the actual transfer occurs. I don't know if the plans are prior to construction to do that. And one more thing to consider as far as public access, it is a north-south street, but the pedestrian path along the creek and the bridge itself would be public based off of the easement. It's going to mirror the existing language that's there today. So there's going to be an element of public access through the center of the block going east-west.
And public access, you mean public access as in walking? And public access not as in driving?
Walking, yes, and there's provisions in the language for vehicular traffic for maintenance and operation of the bridge and any improvements that are put within the creek easement.
Okay. Again, but again, that vehicular, vehicles would again only be for, A, developers, people that are working within that establishment, correct? I just want to, I'm just making it clear for the public that this street will no longer be available for drive-through on public use.
Based off of the plan, it is a, it will still be a roadway, and there's no gates or anything proposed to stop it, but it would be a way on private land, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Dirk, you appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Other questions on this item? So the requested action, Commissioners, is adoption of a resolution vacating Cooley Street between Eleanor and Water Streets. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hess.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Pradel. Discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, Clerk Boring. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sir.
Yeah, Commissioner Boring.
I tried to remember to do this, but I just wanted to make sure the planning commission heard this instance under August 4th meeting, the planning commission unanimously approved moving forward to the commission. I also just wanted to note too, it just, this particular project made me think about the Notre Dame visit that came by with the researchers, and I remember they showed that the aerial shot of downtown. And, you know, when you look at downtown, when you're just walking through the streets, it just feels like it's very full. But they really put it into perspective about how much opportunity there is to find development and grow our downtown even more than what it is right now. And so I think, you know, if we want to succeed and continuing to grow and thrive as a city, we're going to have to find creative uses of land and different strategies to, you know, grow and develop. So I think this is a good example of creativity and working in tandem with a private and public partnership to make that happen, so.
Thank you very much, Christian Pradel. Any other discussion? Clerk Boring?
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. The adoption of a resolution vacating Cooley has been approved. Now we are down to reports and legislation. Manager Ritzma.
Yeah, I'd like to ask our Public Services Director, James Baker, to come forward. So every quarter, we provide an update on order remediation efforts at our water reclamation facility, and this evening, thought it'd be good for Mr. Baker to give a presentation of it. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commission. Again, my name is James Baker, the Public Services Director, and within your packets you have what we call Order Task Force Quarterly Report. So four times a year, we're providing updates to the city commission on our kind of partnership that we have with Graphic Packaging International, City Kalamazoo, Eagle, the Air Quality Division, and then we also have one member of the public that sits on this technical committee. That individual's name is Mr. Aaron Wright. He's also our president of the ECC. So in the report, there's a narrative summary. It's about 11 pages. It just kind of talks through some recent events, some of the things that we've been up to lately. That's all pretty easily digestible. There's, within the report, there's some link to some appendix documents, and so I'll kind of show you where that stuff is at. I'm on our city website right here, so anybody can get to this via the city website. And then so if you click on Order Task Force, you see Report, and then all the appendices are right here within the meeting itself. So one of the things that we have been working on is increased and enhanced functionality with the EnviroSuite platform, and that's, this is posted right in within our website. So if you saw me, I just clicked on it from our website. And what this shows us is these are hydrogen sulfide sensors that are out in the community, and they've got names on, I'm going to zoom in here a little bit and just get a little closer, just so you can kind of see what the names are here. So where the name of the sensor is kind of where we're at. So Northside Association, that's a sensor that's located on the property that's kind of cornered by Ransom and Park and Church Street, where the NACD Foundation's at, so we've got a sensor there. Street, where the NACD Foundation's at. So we've got a sensor there. Goal and Riverview, we've got a station, a sensor at Public Safety Station at the Goal and Riverview area. Mayor's Riverfront, a monitor, we've got a sensor there. So we've got sensors, we've got 11 sensors out in the community that monitor the H2S, hydrogen sulfide. And then you can click on any one of these sensors, and it will show you, you know, some instantaneous results of where, you know, what's kind of happening right here at this sensor. So you can see, we just clicked on this Northside Association Monitor Sensor, and you can see the trend is kind of going from zero, that's that bottom line, and it's, it sits at zero for some point, and then it's kind of oscillating up and down. So it's been going up to three or four. And if you want to see a different day, you can click down here on the calendar, and then you can click, you know, say, any day you want. You can go back a day, you can go any, any day you want. And then that shows you, you know, what what happened yesterday. So this would be Sunday, and you see that it's up and down about four. It's set right at zero for a number of hours, and then it's, you know, kind of up and down again. Some additional functionality that we've got with this, if you click in the upper right-hand area of the operations menu, we've got reports. And then this provides a series of kind of reports that go all the way from one year back, complete summaries. If you scroll all the way down, there's 45 different reports that you can access here based on all those different sensors that we've got. And we're, we also include all of the, what we call in-plant sensors. So we've got, going back to, you know, where we were there in the map, a number of these sensors that we're showing are actually sensors within our treatment plant. So these are areas that are, you know, not necessarily open to the public. They're not intended for public occupation or use. Raw pumping station, industrial chamber monitor, sludge, storage facility monitor. And we show you trends for all that stuff as well. So I just want to take a few minutes and just introduce this website. We've been putting a lot of effort into this. We've got a lot more stuff coming. We've been talking on, you know, some other areas, some of the things, if you look in the report, we're talking about bringing some passive carbon odors scrubber units to put out on the Davis River Interceptor. We're talking about modeling with Sewer X, the smart sewer documents that have been coming forward to City Commission for approval. We're implementing those out in the system. And we've talked before about some enhanced functionality where we can kind of see flow in the sewers. And then if there's a backup, we can hopefully identify that before there's a major problem. We were very successful in that on Kalamazoo Avenue. We were able to identify a sewer backup before it caused damage to a well-known bar and restaurant on Kalamazoo Avenue. So the system is working very, very great. We're very excited for it. And we're kind of going into that next step of being able to monitor in sewer hydrogen sulfide levels at some areas. And then ultimately, our goal with that is an attempt to correlate some in sewer readings with, you know, some air readings at the plant or something like that, and try to get some better understanding of that data. So that's essentially really what I wanted to bring forward, and happy to have any comments or questions. I can talk about the data. I could talk about some of the work we've been doing here lately.
Questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Hess?
Thank you. Director Baker, I'm sure that you could talk about this all day. We're all might, we got, we got nothing but time, right? So you brought up the graphs, and you can bring it up from any one of these sites. I can't, the print's really small. So like, at the upper limit, when the, when the graph reaches its height, what is that concentration? And is that concentration associated with health risk?
So each one of these graphs will kind of auto-scale, if you will. You know, so these graphs, right now, the one I just pulled up, on your screen, you see it kind of tops out at four, four parts per billion, and it goes back down to zero. I'm going to let the the health folks kind of give you an indication of what's, what is, you know, a different value, you know, mean for these different things like that. I know that's something that we're, we're going to continue to work on. We're going to continue to study that. You know, I can tell you that we're, we're shooting to continue. An annual goal of ours is year-over-year reduction in community odor as measured by the H2S. So, you know, we're looking, we're not necessarily saying that, you know, this is a number we have to be below, but we're going to work to continue that, that progress into the future.
Okay. I know it's, it's an indicator and help for us. And I think you're referring to what the Eagle and the Health and Human Services reports that are not yet out.
Correct.
Do we know when those are going to come?
We believe that there, there could be an update to that work in first quarter of 2023.
Okay, thank you. And so, so when those numbers do spike on any sensor, and you have people that are monitoring those sensors, correct, what action is taken when you see that spike? What do we do?
Yeah, that's a great question. So let me, before we go into that, we'll just talk a little bit about the accuracy and the precision, kind of the calibration of these sensors themselves. So all these sensors is, again, very valuable, very important information for us to have as a community. That being said, these are not EPA certified. This is not lab-grade sensor information. So this is what we consider process control. And if I could use an analogy to us back in our everyday lives, this is, would be similar to the accuracy that your vehicle has in terms of your outside temperature, that you may say on your dash, it might say, you know, the outside temperature readings, this or that. That's very useful and helpful to you, but you cannot claim any cold or hot records. It's not national, it's not certified by National Weather Service. It's just for your own kind of use. And so that's kind of what these readings are, just kind of for our own use. There is noise in the data, so there is, you'll see a spike that may happen back down. So a spike that just goes and comes back, you know, we, we may reach out to EnviroSuite and say, hey, what's, what's happening with that? Is that real? Is that just the sensor initializing or reconfiguring? Because that happens, these sensors do have some reconfiguration that they go through. And then we want to understand, too, is there, what is the causation for that? So, you know, we can see around, for example, our process areas in the treatment plant, we can, you know, kind of understand how they react to different processes that we're doing. So I'm going to look at the sludge storage facility monitor. We've been making some changes in terms of loadout times. So we're trying to better time our centrifuge operations with our truck loadout times, so that we can kind of right-time manufacture, if you would kind of think of that, for the cake that's going into the truck. So we use that sludge facility monitor as an indicator of that. So a lot of these, we're trying to get feedback for what's happening, and then we're trying to make some response to that. As we get out into the community, that's a little bit harder to understand. We had to, you know, wind speed, direction, that's all coming into play. There are some additional analytics that we're working on. It's not ready yet. We may have that in future quarterly updates. It's our goal to kind of look at all the atmospheric conditions, like forecast, where our performance has been with the particular community odor sensors, and then make some predictions on that to say, you know, you know, there could be enhanced odor observations over this time period, or, you know, it's going to be a more flat or neutral occurrence. So we are working to enhance some of the capacity of the sensors and some of that feedback that we get from it.
Great. Thank you so much. And I really appreciate your, your wonderful educational information for us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Hess. Yes, Commissioner Juarez.
Just a couple of questions. So you were mentioning that these are not EPA certified. They're just for, like, information, right?
Correct.
Why don't we get EPA certified sensors to help us understand what's actually happening?
Well, so to answer that, I don't want to misrepresent that, you know, we have confidence in these sensors. We believe that they're, they're true. But there's just accuracy and precision and our ability to get all the way down to, you know, some infinite value is limiting to go after, say, EPA verified sensors. So we don't have the capacity and performance. And just like that temperature indicator thing I talked about, for you to get a, like NASA certified temp sensor, it, the cost may be limiting. And same with this. So we're, what really attracts us to the EnviroSuite platform is our ability to trend information over time, our ability to communicate to the community in real time, and our ability to have this information out there. So we could do the, you know, EPA certified testing, but we kind of go into a black box. We set out a vapor canister. We collect the information. We send that off to a certified lab. We wait several weeks, and then we get a report back. So for us, it's more valuable to have real-time information at your fingertips versus to go through these stopgap kind of measurements of going out, conducting a sample, waiting, and not having anything, you know, in between and then coming back. And that's kind of speaks to some of the frustration that we've had in years leading up to embarking on this EnviroSuite platform, because we've done odor studies. We've gone out, we've sampled in acute area. We've had the EPA certified testing. We've gone out with tell-all on our bags. We've gone out with, you know, the, the vacuum canisters, and we've collected data over, you know, a specific time period. But it was a one shot in the dark. And then we've come back weeks or months later, we've analyzed the data, and we said, okay, here you go. Here's your EPA certified data. What does it mean? I don't know. Let's get more testing. So what this platform does is it allows us, over time, we now have the ability, and some of these sensors have been in place since September 2019. So in some of these locations, and we continue to add more locations to this, it's our goal to continue to support this platform into the future. And then we kind of go from chasing ghosts to actually having reliable data that we can respond to.
So in that, the reliable data that you do have, there's a trend, right?
Correct.
Levels of what this chemical or these, you know, and you see the trend, you see it. So are some of these things harmful to our community as we look at the trends and what we've had since 2019? And can we say that there is an issue?
So what we're looking at right now in terms of the trends, we're only looking at the trends that we have here is only hydrogen sulfide, just the, the H2S. And what we, what we can see from our data is that we believe we are trending down from where we were in 2019. You know, each one's a little bit different. There is some noise behind some of the data, but it would appear to us that we are beginning to slowly trend down. In the health study that was released by Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, they're working on the second phase of that now, but there was an initial study that they first did in response to hydrogen sulfide. And in that study, they referenced some kind of two-tier levels of community odor results above 70 parts per billion, which would be a concern for exposure between seven and 14 days. And none of these readings are at 70 over a seven to 14-day period. Another group that they looked at was what they call intermediate exposure. So that'd be up to 365 days, and that was levels up to 20 parts per billion. And so there, at the time, there were a few of these sensors, Goal at Riverview is one of them, that if you looked at its long-term data, it had somewhere, I don't know the exact number, but it was around or near 20. And so they went into an additional phase of study. Since then, we've added more sensors. We have some more clarity. We better, better understand what's going on. So we're waiting for kind of that next stage. So what the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services has already publicly stated is that there's no short-term or intermediate risk of exposure to hydrogen sulfide, because the numbers are from a seven to 14-day window below 70, and then from a 365-day, one-year exposure at or below 20. And so the kind of the next question that's out there that folks are going right now to try to understand and work on, you've got some very expert toxicologists that are working on this at Michigan's Department of Health and Human Services, is kind of, okay, we're just below 20, right? But, you know, we're, you see a sensor's at six. You see, I'm not scrolling anymore. Northside's at zero. So there's, there is some value here, and then trying to quantify what that looks like. And so that's kind of what the work is happening right now. Another thing is that the, some of the other parameters in some of our other air tests that we've done, things like VOCs, we're not trending that. We don't have those samples out there in the community. We're working on that. We've had a call with EnviroSuite. We'd like to bring VOC sensors into this platform, and we'd like to trend that. We're also, there's a lot, also, folks doing a lot of great work in terms of community odor, excuse me, community air, and, you know, quantifying air pollution at community levels. We've been talking to a gentleman, an entrepreneur, at Just Air. It's a firm that's currently working in Grand Rapids and City of Detroit. And so they bring in some community level, you know, NACS, National Ambient Air Quality Standard, information that's tested. So we're, we're trying to pull this other stuff together. We've had a lot of success with EnviroSuite. We've got a lot of success with H2S and trending that, and potentially getting into modeling that. That's our next step. And then we'd like to bring in VOC, and we'd like to bring in Just Air as kind of these next steps to keep going to better answer the kind of everyday question that folks may have of, you know, what are my exposures? You know, what, what would my health impacts look like? And the community level to these, you know, what's in the air around us?
What is VOC?
Volatile, volatile organic compounds. It's just another suite of chemicals that usually have a carbon chain atom within them. And they're usually volatilized and vaporized readily off, you know, into the atmosphere.
And my last question, I'm sorry. I was just imagining where you could put these sensors. And I mean, wouldn't it be ideal just to put them at the graphic packaging and our places to see what's actually coming out of these places with that?
So that's a great question. So some of that, I do want to separate what is regulated stack emissions. So that's different from fugitive emissions. And so there are, whether it's, you know, a power plant, or it's graphic packaging, or it's, you know, another one of our industries, they have permit to install, they have regulated air emissions where things like nitrous, nitrous oxide, sulfur dioxide, particulate matter, PM 2.5, ozone, all these things, they are measured, they are regulated, they do report them. And they are required as part of their air emissions permit to have what's called SEMs, or Continuous Emissions Monitoring Systems. So that is in place. But you can't smell NOx, you can't smell SOx, you can't smell ozone, you can't smell PM 2.5. That's something different. We've been talking, a lot of this odor investigation stuff, on what we refer to as fugitive chemicals or fugitive emissions, which is part of that, you know, overall process where we're not, we don't have a defined stack to measure and implement everything else. So, and to your point, that is some, where you see at the treatment plant over here, we've got the EnviroSuite sensors directly in the process areas of the treatment plant. So we are, you know, understanding what's happening at that treatment plant, certainly with respect to, you know, process modifications and how we operate something. Is there some room to try to do something to mitigate odor? Try to learn from that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Director Baker this time? Commissioner Pradel?
Hey, Director Baker. I was wondering if you could just give us a quick update, just in terms of the, the capital improvements with the carbon scrubbers and the biofilter, and just kind of the status of both of those.
Yes, I'd be happy to go into that. So the carbon scrubber units, there's four of those, four unit locations. And they were installed in a project that began in 2019, and then they were completely operational and in service effective July of 2021. So the carbon scrubber units are in place, they're operational, and they continue to work. The biofilter project was, you know, had gone through a number of engineering enhancements. It was bid out twice. And then subsequently, we encumbered funds from that project. We had approximately $13.5 million in total project cost, and we only had about $4.5 million of project. The project was essentially $9 million. The project was essentially nine million dollars over budget. Uh, in addition to the budget challenges, uh, we are also facing a number of engineering challenges with the project, uh, namely, uh, a a change in uh the waste stream characteristics coming from graphics packaging. However, let me note, those were positive changes. So they began adding supplemental oxygen, uh, both pure oxygen and hydrogen peroxide to their process, which then reduced the hydrogen sulfide coming out of their tra- out of their tanks. And it was kind of changing the landscape of where our design point was on that biofilter. So these kind of two major forces that kind of influenced us to, you know, hit pause in that project. Uh, we did on encumber the funds, so we've released our uh selves of of that project. Uh, but we are, you know, we remain committed to solving the odor odor challenges. And one of the things that um was included in that biofilter project that we've pulled out, we're going to go ahead and do is the uh flow rerouting of how the pipe configurations come from graphic packaging, how they connect uh to the city Kamazoo Waste Waste Treatment Plant. So we're going to be repiping that. Um, and through that work and then after, when that's done, we're going to continue to monitor and and kind of track our progress and see is um reassess that need for the biofilter. So um, that's something that you could come in the future um if if we, you know, deem it necessary. And then we've got a number of of things, including that pipe reroute project, that we're going to continue our focus to to reduce odors.
The other question I had for you as well is, I know uh there was the phase one presentation from the regulatory agencies, uh, state and federal, um, about the short term and median uh length uh impacts. The phase two, just to can um make sure to confirm my understanding of this correctly, the phase two was for the long term impacts. The bodies that are involved with that are MDHHS, which is Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, Eagle, which uh Environmental, uh Great Lakes and Energy, and then EPA Environmental Protection Agency, the federal agency. All three of them working on on the study. Do they do that? Do they do the study independent of each other or are they, do they collaborate? Are they working together to conduct that study to um uh give give the community results?
I'll attempt to answer from some observations, but I'd really have to refer uh, you know, probably back to the project manager at Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. Um, our observations have been that the teams are kind of working together. Um, you've got uh health focused folks, toxicologists, that sort of thing. You also have uh folks that really understand the regulations and some of the technical aspects of how uh some of these are are interacting and working together. Um, there's another component of that of the ATSDR, which is the Agency for Toxic Substance and Disease Registry. That's all the that that federal agency is also participating um in this study as well in providing technical uh resource and technical guidance uh for that larger project team. So it's my uh observation as a project team. Um, and so there's several folks that are involved in that.
So pretty significant state and federal resources on on that front. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? So I I just want to say, uh, Director Baker, thank you so very much. You're obviously very, very fluent on this topic. Uh, and uh you live it and work it and care about it. And that that means a whole lot here for the folks sitting up here in the dais. So I appreciate your continued work. Also, I guess I just want to note, just uh building on what uh Christian Prito was talking about is that there are some, a a large set of skilled resources that are currently bringing their expertise to bear at these various agencies that are obviously way beyond your or our capacity to evaluate. And and we're waiting for this extensive set of of review and uh understanding about our situation for people that are specifically trained in this work. And and even though you obviously know a lot about it, uh, we are really looking for the the support and the uh resources, which are, you know, vast compared to to ours here in this particular area in the city to help inform us as we go forward. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we've made it to the time on our agenda when individual commissioners can uh make comments on items of import. Is there anyone who would like to start this evening? Travis, Travis, Commissioner Vice Mayor Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, it was very exciting last week to see that the lodge is open and it's beautiful. And it's really done a great job. So I want to thank the Lift Foundation, but I especially want to thank Mayor David Anderson for all the work that he did on on making that a reality. Thank you, David.
Thank you very much.
Great work. So there are a number of important events coming up over the next week. Tomorrow morning, the North Side Ministerial Alliance's breakfast. Sunday, the NAACP's dinner. And next Wednesday, Isaac's big annual meeting. These are so important to our city. And the city is so much better because we have these organizations in our city. And we are deeply grateful for the work that they do. And I know that their goal is that every family and every person in this city achieves the fullness of life that they deserve. And I want to say that that is the exact goal of this city commission and this administration. And I know that if we can work together and develop a collective response, we will be able to achieve that goal. Martin Luther King said one time, "We must learn to live together as brothers and sisters or perish together as fools." I believe that we have the resources and the people in this city to realize the goals that we are pouring our life out for. I hope it will be so.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cooney. Commissioner Hess?
I'll go after that because you stole what I was going to say. Um, I I was going to talk about the things that we as a commission attend uh other than meetings and and preparation for meetings. And and those, that's the important work in the community. Uh, I do want to say that the Isaac meeting is on Tuesday, October 25th. Um, and that will be broadcast on Facebook and YouTube, I believe. Um, but it that's one of the joyous parts of community service, of commission service. And I think we all will agree on that. Um, besides the breakfast, uh, we mentioned it in one of our proclamations, the lights on after school day on Thursday. Um, hopefully we can all show up for one of those uh at one of those sites. Um, and the NAACP Freedom Fund banquet. Um, so I I look forward to those and 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 to seeing everyone out there. Reminder, uh, this Saturday, there is a foam and electronics recycling happening. Uh, our quarterly foam, uh foam number six Styrofoam, hopefully you're all keeping it uh and waiting to bring it to- Mayor's Riverfront Park on Saturday, the 22nd, from 10 to 1. And then finally, uh, I think several of us were there, but in in an inspirational and very, very sad funeral for PSO Christian Smith last Friday, um, it was very clear to me that the hearts and prayers of this community go out to his wife, his small children and his coworkers and close family and friends. It was inspiring in that it was a public display of the love and the care that these officers have for one another. And and I want to say, I want to say that the love and the care that you have for one another inspires me. And I'm really grateful for your service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Other comments? Commissioner Hoffman?
Thank you. Um, first, I just want to thank Mitch for for bringing his son, his young son and wife to to the Committee on the Whole today. I think that was a wonderful experience as a young person to come and see how government can operate. I just wanted to lift that up. I wanted to say also, the sidewalks on Lulu uh that we saw in the Committee on the Whole meeting, it absolutely made me smile from the inside just by repairing and and redoing sidewalks. It improved the quality of life for the people who live on that on that street and that that are affected by that. The last thing I want to just lift up is we hear a lot about a vibrant downtown and we we spend a lot of money on infrastructure. And what I'm not hearing a whole bunch of is what we are doing to really affect change in our individual residents' lives and in the housing sector. When I add up the money that we spend on infrastructure, that we spend on consultants, uh, and then when I equate that to what we're spending on housing, we're not investing enough in housing and in the people. We want to know, I've said it before, if you want to know the health of your city, don't look at the vibrancy of downtown. Look at the people that are most marginalized, those who don't have a place to live, those who are sleeping outside. And and it 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 makes me feel really, really unuseful when I see us spending a ton of money on infrastructure consultants and we have people living outside. We have temporary solutions that can be handled right now. Why are they not handled? I want us as a commission to have that discussion uh and just have a keep a real meeting between ourselves so we can all get on the same page because I don't think we're all on the same page. And so we still have work to do in a vibrant downtown, good. But how about let's have some very, very vibrant east side, north side, south side? And not to mention, you know, I I don't say a whole lot about the environmental issues happening on the north side and the east side, but I will say this, I moved on the north side in 2018 and my health has taken a blow. I don't say that because I want special attention. I say that because I'm experienced in it. And I don't need a report from the state to tell me that my health is suffering. And so what can we do, this commission, to start mitigating some of those things? We've heard residents call in and say they can't even purchase their their medication. Well, how can we impact that financially for those that I know, because I'm affected, are being affected? And we can do big things. We talked about aspirational, let's let's put some justice on that. Let's do something about it. So um, I just wanted to put that out there that there we've done good things, we can do even greater things. And people and housing should be the priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Commissioner Juarez?
Just a few comments, just to share with our community in regarding, you know, the expectation we have on the the organization, the city of Kalamazoo. As a, what I'm learning as governance and governing, Kalamazoo is one of the most profound cities that governs in a way where their core values are looked at with the most intentions to provide for their citizens. So when we think about the system that we have, when it comes to our core values, our, you know, water and sewer and all these things that we provide for our community, we are at the top of the list when I think about other government agencies, other governments in in Michigan. Now, the expectation that the community has on the government in Kalamazoo, I feel, has to be adjusted. When we expect the city of Kalamazoo to fix homelessness, to fix poverty, to fix anti-racism, that is a approach that and an expectation that's put on the city that is almost impossible to do. But I do believe we can facilitate conversations as commissioners and hearing the community, like um town hall meetings, like um action meetings, um like Isaac's putting on. And so it feels like a lot of times the city gets blamed for a lot of things they have no control over. And there are some things that we do have control over. And a lot of times when we think about policy and how we set policy, it's for the things we have as core values and in providing for our community and our residents. Now, I do believe that we need to look at those things and and really take a fine tooth comb through how we write policy. But uh, the other thing is, we hear a lot of people complaining about issues in our community that could be addressed by community, that could be addressed in a way where when we come together, Don Cooney says this all the time, um, it's um, the criticism that we get is a workable solution, right? And I think we have to kind of adjust the way we think about why do, like, how we expect the city to fix all these things. When in reality, if people could come together and people in organizations, churches and businesses and communities come together, that is the louder leading voice that makes the change. When people gather and mobilize and have the 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 numbers, then we as a city have to respond in a way where we have to say, okay, we have to change things. And I believe that there's a movement coming where that's going to happen, where we're going to be able to have our differences and have our, you know, everybody has an opinion, everybody has their own concerns, everybody wants this to happen, that to happen and all these things to happen. And sometimes we feel like our, what we are uh passionate about gets put on the back burner because something else is much louder in the community and is being funded more than what we think is more important. And I believe is i- if our if our community can come together and and start prioritizing those top five things that we need to work on, like housing, like homelessness, like poverty, like anti-racism, like gun violence. And we actually start having conversations in ways where it involves everybody. Because I've been at meetings where it hasn't involved people and then the people not involved get fill a certain way and then they get involved. And then it's like a bigger meeting where we're trying to figure out stuff, right? And and I feel like everybody has great intentions to do this work and everybody's passionate about the work. The problem I see in Kalamazoo is there is a disconnection between organizers, organizations, churches, nonprofits, business and community and education. How, there's a big disconnection. There's so many silos. Everybody thinks what they got going on is more important than the next person. And I think uh Ms. Wendy Field said it the best, Philippians, "Love others more than yourself. Put others' interests before your own interests and then you will start to see what can happen." But if it's about you, it's about what you love, you'll never see the support that you need to get things done. If we put others before ourselves and look to others' interests before our own damn interests, I believe we can make a difference. But we're not willing to do that because we want to see what we believe is more important than the next person get done. And I truly believe that when we start looking at each other as human beings and loving each other in ways where transformation can happen, then that's the difference. But until we start loving each other and putting each other before our own interests, we will never see a change because it's them against us, it's the it's it's the p- the city, the the community. It's so much division. A house divided cannot stand. So a government that is in place to lead the city is going one way, community is going a different way, churches are going whichever way they're going. And we wonder why we have so many disparities and we wonder why we have so many issues. And we wonder, we wonder why we can't be on the same page. That this city has so many resources, everybody's grabbing at them for what they want. But Wendy Wendy Field said that that was true. I believe what she says. That scripture in the Bible is is a hard scripture to abide by. It's a difficult scripture to apply to your life on a daily basis. And I believe it could happen because if it if it couldn't, why would it be there? Right? Right? And I think we can do that. I really do think we can do that. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Juarez. Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner Juarez. Said some good words over there. I'm gonna just talk about a little bit of uplifting things. I love how when we had our presentations today, we actually went to the city websites and kind of showed people how to navigate that, where to go and get information, FFE, Director Baker, thank you for that. Sometimes just, if individuals are watching this at home on TV, you know, they can kind of see how to navigate the website, so thank you for that. I really enjoyed hearing about the green energy from one of our public speakers. And speaking on that, I want to say that this Sunday, October 23rd, in Bronson Park, from 12:30 to 3:30, it's going to be an event held by the Citizens Climate Lobby. They will be there within the park talking about the city's sustainability. Also, the, the city will also be there via, I believe it is EDC with a table, giving out some information. And then I also wanted to bring light, so all commissioners get this book in our mail. It's called The Review, and I, I love to read, I love to be educated on certain things. So I just wanted to, first of all, and only, give a shout out to the city of Kalamazoo. They won the Michigan Green Communities Challenge. I have a picture, I believe this is Mr. Berkstam in there. I believe, I could be mistaken. But we got a bronze. So I challenge us to get to the silver, and then the next year after that to get to the gold, because I feel like we are on that way when we start talking about how we can make our city greener. When you think about green and you think about the energy, you think about the solar panels, that's one way that we could help our residents in lowering the cost of what it takes to heat their home, especially again when they're in homes that don't have the best insulation here in the city of Kalamazoo, especially with winter. I also wanted to bring to light some information that is happening downtown, with some of the downtown updates, regarding some of our restrooms. Right now, they, they've kind of mapped out some areas of where we could possibly be putting some bathrooms and locations for visitors. That is still in the works, but I want to let our downtown businesses and our downtown residents know that the city is working on that, that is something that, that we're really looking into to make sure that we can find a spot for, not even our houseless, but just for anyone that's visiting downtown, to be able to have a place to relieve themselves without having to go and patron a business if they don't need to. I wanted to say I'm very excited about the ambassador program and what the FFE has allocated for the ambassador program, and then also with the matching grant from the Irving Ness Gilmore Foundation. I believe her name was Priscilla, and I see her all the time downtown, and she always has the best face, the best smile, and she enjoys what she does. I do look forward to going to the, the Isaac meeting on the 25th. I also look forward to going to the NAACP dinner, and I'm glad to be up here with you guys because I feel like we all have the same thing in our minds and in our hearts. Thanks.
Seems like the heavens have opened. Is that what that is? Is it pouring out there?
No, I think so.
Ah, okay. Thought maybe there was a heavenly response there. Commissioner Decker? Thank you. Commissioner Preto?
Sure. Commissioner Hoffman talked about this a little bit as well, but I'll share it every time, but I think it's an amazing thing when you see parents who bring their children into commission chambers, and you mentioned Mitch and Jay, they brought Ethan here tonight to talk about what they were seeing around the school. There was a caller as well named Rachel. And to your, to your point, Commissioner Juarez, you know, about loving each other and doing what we can do our part to love each other, slow down. Just slow down. I'm telling you, today, just driving my kids to school and driving to work, which is pretty close proximity, I saw two accidents today, and I guarantee both of them were speed-related accidents, crashes that probably could have been prevented by people just taking a deep breath and slowing down. A simple thing that we can all do to support each other. You know, I'm coming up on my third year anniversary as a commissioner here next month, and I will say unequivocally, if you take it consistently from start to this day, the most common complaint I hear, no matter what neighborhood, what age, whatever demographic that can, that talks about their greatest concern in this community, almost universally comes down to speed. And so, you know, that's something that we can all do, do our part to, to improve. I also know City Manager Ritzma asked the parents to write down their contact information, so I appreciate anybody who can follow up with them, but it is, you know, it's scary when you're out with your young kids. I got three kids myself, you know, under age seven, and I'll tell you, like, it's, you know, your, your kids do erratic things sometimes, and to think that if your kid runs off into the street too quickly because somebody's going down a street 20 miles per hour faster than they should, is something that should all concern us about the safety in our community. We heard some presentations earlier tonight as well, speaking of that, about traffic calming, and I know there's been a lot of work going on in the community. Director Baker shared this, that something like 104 projects happened this season throughout the city, which is truly remarkable. But I think what's particularly remarkable is that there were 20.4 lane miles of traffic calming in, in this season, 10 lane miles of bike facilities. And in the presentation in the Committee on the Whole, they talked about in just West Nidge and Park, so far they saw about a 4.8 mile per hour decrease in speed. And then in all those lane improvements, there was a two to five mile per hour reduction in speed. That's powerful stuff. I know it's inconveniencing for some folks and challenging for us to readjust to the new norm, but if we want to go to the next level as a city, these are some of the changes we have to make, and it's just really great to see that, that some of those are paying off. Commissioner Hess mentioned this, a few of us had the honor of being at the funeral service for Public Safety Officer, Officer Christian Smith, celebrating his life, truly, truly moving. We heard our own Chief Boyzen, who helped to eulogize Officer Smith, and his final words, I don't know how he got through it, but his final words are, "We'll take it from here." You know, shared a lot about the spirit and the care and how much he loved this community. Leaves behind his wife Sam, two beautiful children, and that parking lot and that auditorium was packed, and says a lot about a person's life to know that that many people cared to celebrate. So keeping his family and keeping the men and women of our city who knew him in our thoughts. And then lastly, I just wanted to make it a chance, I know we always recognize how awesome it is to work with such a great group of people up here, and I, I think of that all the time, I mean that. But I also often think about our significant others and our families that take a toll for us to do this work. And without naming everybody's names of their partners or kiddos, because there are many, you know, I think it's important to recognize that when you see all of us up here, there is somebody holding down the fort on the other end. In my case, a mom who takes care of three kiddos for sometimes, you know, in the wee night for these meetings, and you just put it into perspective, this is just the meetings that we show up to, but that's like one out of 10 weeknights, right? For years, for some of us. And that doesn't even include all the great upcoming events we have going on. So just want to take a moment to, to give a shout out for my partner Erin, but also to our other significant others and partners and families who hold it together for us while we're, we're up here doing this important work. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Preto. I appreciate that. One of the benefits and I guess honors of getting to serve on this body here, and maybe more particularly getting to serve in this seat as mayor, is now that COVID has ended, the vast number of community events that are going on, I mean, more than can be attended in a place like Kalamazoo. And sometimes when we sit up here and talk about community, seems like conceptual in a certain way, but when you do attend the vast variety of community events, you are reminded of this, that community is built in your own square inch. And it is the actions that you take every day in your life, and those decisions that you make that are what build this entire fabric that we can talk about from 30,000 feet as community. And that is the foundation for how we are together. And I just want to mention three, I would say in some ways very different things, things that are probably generally not recognized or just part of life, three events that I have attended very recently. One of them I want to recognize is Curtis Isaac and his Eastside Boxing Academy. He's been doing that work, working with young men primarily, but young women as well for years and years and years. I've gotten to attend several of those events, often held over at St. Mary's. And there's teams that come in from Fort Wayne, Indiana, and Flint, Michigan, and there's doctors that volunteer ringside, and referees, of course, that make sure that sportsmanship is being followed. And there's just not only families coming to those events that are supporting each other, who are participating in that, but at the end of every one of these matches, the participants hug each other. And, and it's, it's just a moving gathering of people. I know some people think there shouldn't be boxing anymore, I get all that, but it's just, there's a group of people who are very involved in that world, and there is somebody, and actually there's more boxing groups being formed here in Kalamazoo as we speak, but they're doing that work and incorporating ideas of self-discipline and being fearless in sportsmanship and working hard and shooting for a goal and supporting each other. And that's just one, one thread that runs in the community, that's community building in a way that is going on, and we might not think about that every day. Another event that I attended was a going-home ceremony for Albert Jim Pearson, who was married to Willie Mae Pearson. And Willie Mae Pearson was the first African-American realtor, I believe, in Kalamazoo County, one of the first women realtors in Kalamazoo County. Operated her business out of a house on Douglas, just 100 feet behind my house, for years and years and years. Interacted with her a great deal over the course of time. And she herself, and she's still alive, was a mentor for people we know now and recognize, like Tualakat, for example, who is a realtor here in town. But what we were recognizing in this going-home ceremony was her husband, Jim Pearson, which, you know, was not famous in that way. But listening to his story and how supportive he was of her, and how he stuck with his family, and how he made sure to support his family and helped his wife get her business off the ground, and her children that were there, it just reminds you how important that work is right at the family level, being there for your family every single day. That's community building. And it was just, I can't tell you how moving it was to be there and for a moment, having people talk, who knew this man well, and tell stories, and, and bring his life to life for those of us that were there. It's very, very meaningful, deeply embedded part of our community. And the third event that I just want to mention was one that was sponsored over at Borges, and it recognizes people who have supported and sometimes made the choice for their family members who have passed away, often in an unplanned way, to donate organs to people on organ donation lists, that gift of life and organ donation. And I went to that event at Borges, and there were a large number of families there who'd been part of that decision in that often some horrible time when you have to make that decision, and there were folks who'd been recipients of those donations, including, if you remember whether she works in the Sheriff's Department or not, but people who spoke about, who would not have been there that evening were it not for those donations that they received. Something we just, we don't really think about much every day, but also just a deeply embedded kind of a community function that happens at a very, very personal level that also connects us. And interestingly, one of the comments that, that a couple people made who were, had received donations of various important bottom, body parts that kept them alive, was the connection that was continuing to be maintained between the family and that now recipient, and the bonds and relationships that were created there. That intimacy where people maybe somehow saw someone who was a perfect stranger as now, I mean, literally via their body, part and parcel of their family as well now also. And so it just reminds me, the everyday work, the taking care of your family, the volunteering your neighborhood, the talking to your neighbor across the fence, the participating in, in larger community things, that's all the building blocks. That's all the positive community building work that creates, you know, a place that we hopefully all want to live. Got many more events coming up, but at this point, I just want to say thank you to this commission, thank you to city staff for your work, appreciate that. Those of you that presented tonight, I love you. Kalamazoo, we're adjourned.